I don't want that again. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 2023 Brookhaven Borough Council Meeting. Please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, everyone. Madam Mayor?
Good evening. The deceased residence for the month of July 2023, Kathleen Alvord, Philip Liberatore, Pasquale Oliveri, Elizabeth Singley, and our borough tax collector, James Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Willett, roll call, please. Mr. Vasquez is trapped in out of state, so he will not be present.
Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mayor Leslie.
Here.
Mr. Vasquez is absent. Ms. Sewicki.
Present.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy, absent. Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Willett, Mrs. Boyle is absent. Chief Montella is on a call. Chief Weiss.
Here.
End of roll call.
Thank you, sir. That opens the first public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and street for the record. Good evening, sir.
Hello. Peter Mysteris, Marshall Road.
We spoke this afternoon, yes?
Yes, we did. I have a different subject.
Oh, okay.
Could anyone speak to our noise ordinance and how it is, like, when it's in effect and what you do about it?
Mrs. Fuchs, we will put the spotlight directly on you.
Depending on what the noise is, there's different levels and different times. So I believe during the workdays, the work week, it's 8:00 AM, unless it's construction, I believe, then it's 7:00 AM. And during the weekends, I think it's 7:00 AM for noise.
Until what time?
I believe it's till dusk. What are you experiencing?
Loud music after 11:00 PM.
Well, that's definitely a violation if it's after 11:00. Yeah, you can call-
Should that happen, you dial 911. Not emergency, and our police department will certainly take care of that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Robert Justin Hoag. I'm the Delaware County Chaplain for the veterans. I happen to live in Upper Darby, but I'm just here to introduce myself in my position at the county level of Delaware County. I'm chaplain for multiple veteran services organizations, Delaware County Veterans Memorial, who had the good taste to award the Freedom Medal to your mayor, who may have administered medical aid to me on the comfort of my bed in your dinkway. We're not sure. We were in the Gulf War at the same time. Just wanted to introduce myself to you and let you know that I am available. If there's anything you need, I know that Brookhaven is a very veteran-aware borough, but if there's anything you need from me in my capacity, officially or unofficially, I am at your service, and I'd like to leave some of my push orders for you, if I could.
Does it have your contact information on it?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
To our American Legion, we don't meet during the summer, but we'll be going back in September, and maybe I can have you come in and speak.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your service, sir.
Yes, sir.
The veterans organizations are near and dear to everyone's heart in this room and throughout the borough of Brookhaven.
Is there anyone else for the first session of public discussion? There is. Good evening.
Good evening. Sean McKenna, 4956 Madison Drive. I want to talk, not tonight because of the storms and everything else, but a lot of people aren't here, but I'll reserve speaking on the events of the weekend till workshop or next council meeting, if that's okay.
Sure.
However, I didn't want to just not show up and, you know, I talk to you all.
Sure.
I just want, I do want to say one thing. I'm still processing the events of the weekend, and I think you are as well.
Yeah, wonderful events, for sure. For a great message.
Literally still processing. There's so many thank yous to go around, and I'm actually still writing out names, but I do want to thank everyone on council who has supported this from the beginning. You know, I mean, from the very first show to the rides, to Chief Weiss and No Shade Novembers and everything. Boy, his phone was blowing up for me on the weekend, as I'm sure people attest to.
Our fellow residents, a lot of it, they supported both projects, both events, and it is heartwarming.
Chief Montella was not here, again, you know, bringing the fire truck, setting up the arch, and, yeah, I mean, you know, it was just been, it was an amazing weekend.
Great car show.
Just want to make sure, and sanctuary dedication. I can think of no other weekend anywhere with just, just the, it was like, literally like walking through an ocean of goodwill, literally. And I couldn't, honestly, Terry, if I tried, Mr. President, I apologize.
Don't do that again.
If I tried to speak right now, I don't think, I don't think that it would be the equivalent of what happened to me when I stood up at that sanctuary and I had all those kids around me.
Yeah. Oh, Brookhaven supports the message, that's for sure, and the cause.
But I just, I had to, you know, I just had to, I had to say something and just let you know that, you know, I am going to work up something much more formal.
So this was the short version?
This is the short version, yeah. This is going to be like one of those texts I send you, you don't read because it's too long, and you say, "I never told you."
TLDR, yes.
So just again, thank you to everyone.
Thanks for all your work on the show and Hope for Haley for your work on the show. It's a fantastic car show. It really is. Is there anyone else for public discussion? Going once, going twice. The first public discussion session is closed. Chief Weiss, sir. Good evening, Chief. Thank you for all your work yesterday and over the weekend, and as Mr. McKenna said, your support for Hope for Haley, Brookhaven's role in it. Council certainly appreciates it. It's obvious that our residents really adore and support the project and the foundation and the message. Thank you.
It's a great weekend. All right, I'll jump right in. For the month of July, Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or was assigned a total of 828 cat assignments through Delcom. And some of the noteworthy incidents, we had three aggravated assaults. I will note that all three were on police and were separate incidents. We had 14 thefts. We had one civil assault, one vandalism or criminal mischief, two frauds. We had two weapons offenses, both gun-related incidents. We had five public drunkennesses. For the month, we had 27 DUIs. Just to break that down, we had nine that were alcohol-related and 18 that were controlled substances. I can tell you that all but, I believe, two were marijuana-related. So 27 DUIs, 18 were controlled substances. We have one liquor law violation, five public drunkennesses, three disorderly conduct, 17 narcotics investigations, 12 animal complaints, five solicitor complaints, two curfew violations, 45 suspicious conditions, nine disturbances or domestic disputes, one civil complaint, 67 medical assists, five mental health responses, 25 assists to other departments, 11 alarms, 16 vehicle crashes, 28 hazardous conditions or assisting motorists. The next number I'm going to give you is pretty unbelievable. For the month of July, we had a total of 108 arrests. 100 adults and eight juveniles were arrested this month. As far as citations, we had 215 citations issued, 31 marking violations, and 536 warnings were issued. One thing that, this is just something that happened this evening, I know everybody's aware of the gypsies or the people that are coming through and being very aggressive with asking people for money. We had a complaint today from several people over in the Giant, and as a result of that, there are individuals that are, were supposed to be, they were supposed to leave the country, they're not here legally, they did not, and what I can tell you is there was a large quantity of money that was seized. Homeland Security is now involved, and I will just say that if you saw the news report that was out there, it's not for the purpose that you believe that it is. They're trying to get money from people. There was wire transfers, they're sent to another country. There's all kinds of things that are going on. It's not as simple as what you think. So just be careful and be very mindful before you part with your money and make sure you know where your money's going and what's happening with it. So I'll leave that for next month. We'll see where that investigation goes, because like I said, Homeland Security is working out with us as we speak. Administratively, in July, we switched to go to defiling the traffic citations. This changeover has been a huge time saver for our officers and also for our court staff. In addition to the fact that they no longer have to try to decipher the officer's handwriting, once the tickets are filed, it is electronically filed, so it takes a lot of time that was wasted in trying to. So everything's electronic, and it was a great changeover for us. For the month of July, we were recognizing Officer Michael Connor as our Officer of the Month. As many of you know, Officer Connor came to us straight out of the police academy. He had no police experience when he came here. He is proving that he is a quick learner, he is a team player, and he is dedicated to this profession. He enjoys engaging with our community, which, as we all know, we much appreciate that because we pride ourselves in our community. So it's great to see him out there interacting and learning this job very well. He goes out each and every day and works hard and continues to learn every shift. I can tell you that we are grateful to have him here on our team, and we thank him for his hard work and the long hours that he has put in. So congratulations to Officer Connor on being selected for Officer of the Month for July. As far as community events, we participated in a replacement license plate program with our state representative, Leanne Kruger, this month. It was very well attended, and we were very glad. There were some very creative license plates out there that people tried to paint themselves, and these were, it was pretty funny, but it was a great event, very well attended. And lastly, I received a letter from Chief Regery from Aston Township Police Department where he expressed his appreciation to Officer Kelso and Officer Duff. They assisted Aston Police at the scene of an armed robbery, and he commended them for their assistance as their assistance directly led to assisting them in the apprehension of the suspects that had fled the scene. Both officers have been provided a copy of Chief Regery's letter, and I appreciate, again, their hard work and dedication. And just as far as training this month, Detective Lemon attended a monthly SWAT training.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Montella's still on a call? Madam Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. First off, I want to apologize that I did not make it to the car show or the dedication, and I heard that it was a wonderful event. We were away for five days. I want to congratulate Officer Mike Connor for Officer of the Month, and I also attended the National Night Out with the police departments, Aston, Brookhaven, and Parkside, and it was a wonderful event. So next year, make sure you bring your families out.
Next year, it'll be at Coburn, I understand.
Right, I think we're going to host it next year. So it was a great event and a beautiful night for it. It wasn't hot and humid. Also, yeah, also, I would like to thank Dennis Mecheck from Troop 916 out of Chad's Ford. He made our wonderful, beautiful, red, white, and blue flag box out in our vestibule area. So if you have any old retired ripped flags, please deposit them in there, and then we'll take care of it. So that's a beautiful box that he made for his Eagle Scout project, so I wanted to thank him for that. And that's the end of my report.
That will be our sixth Eagle Scout, actually, we have upcoming, we'll do our sixth Eagle Scout project-
You're doing great for Brookhaven.
Of the short year already. It's wonderful to have. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wills?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the Solicitor's Report is on file with the Borough Secretary's Office in the event any members of the public would like to review it. I have one action item for council's consideration this evening. I have drafted with the assistance of the police chief and have circulated to Borough Council a proposed ordinance authorizing the Borough Police Department to utilize their discretion and issue a civil penalty for the possession of small amounts of marijuana rather than charging the individual under the Pennsylvania Crimes Code. As council is aware, the arrest, charging, and prosecution of individuals possessing small amounts of marijuana represent a substantial cost to taxpayers as well as to law enforcement, prison, and court resources. And whereas the civil penalty will provide a practical tool and common sense approach to controlling the use of marijuana and promotes greater efficiency within the Brookhaven Borough Police Department and the Delaware County's criminal justice system. And under this proposed ordinance, the Brookhaven Borough Police Department will remain able to charge individuals under the state criminal statutes when the circumstances so warrant and an arrest is warranted. This particular ordinance has been approved by the Delaware County Police Chiefs Association and the Delaware County District Attorney's Office. And so if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to advertise this ordinance for possible adoption at the September monthly meeting.
May I, may you make it clear that it affords our police the opportunity to be more lenient with smaller amounts of marijuana? That is the purpose of the ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
Discretionary, okay. Not more heavy-handed. I misunderstood it completely at the workshop.
It is discretionary, the police department whereby they can implement a civil penalty and, again, avoid perhaps a criminal prosecution and a criminal arrest record and conviction record that, again, can have lifelong circumstances and consequences as a result thereof.
What is the pleasure of the council? Anyone?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any questions on the motion? Motion carries.
Just some other issues in my report. Earlier this month, I had provided some recommendations, advice, and counsel to the police chief, again, with regard to the receipt of a subpoena that the department had received from a particular defense counsel regarding video footage of a defendant's arrest within the police station, and I believe we have come to an accommodation with regard to that particular issue. Next item on my agenda concerns an application that is presently before the Borough Civil Service, or strike that, before the board's zoning hearing board. As council may be aware, Green Drop has recently filed an application with the zoning hearing board to place a Green Drop donation trailer for donated household goods within the ShopRite supermarket located at 5075 Edgemont Avenue. Under the Borough zoning code, mobile office trailers are not a permitted use in the C3 commercial zoning district. The donated goods would be raised to assist the American Red Cross. This case is scheduled to be heard by the zoning hearing board in this very room tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. So certainly, I would invite any members of the public that would like to have further information on this particular application to appear before the board, and, again, you may testify if you so choose whether you be in favor of or in opposition to that particular application.
And that location is at the, if I'm not mistaken, if you're entering Plaza 352, it would be to the left of the ramp where they store front-end letters and tractor trailers and whatnot?
It's not Plaza 352.
What did I say?
It's not Plaza 352. Plaza 352 is where the diner is.
Oh, seemed to.
No, it's not.
No, it's Plaza 352.
That's Plaza 352.
What's the one that is at 352?
Maple.
Oh, that's right, Maple.
Oh, good job, councilwoman. Just like at home, I'm always right. I'm in trouble now.
Moving right along. Next item on my agenda, again, concerns a recent right-to-no request. I've been assisting the, again, the police department with regard to certain right-to-no requests that they have received. And then finally, again, there are a number of litigation matters. I will go into those, but we continue to stay on top of those and continue to provide periodic updates to Borough Council on those litigation matters. Again, they tend to go on for months and months, as we know. The civil litigation process is something that does not resolve itself in a prompt fashion, so we'll continue to move forward with those items. And other than that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Mr. Catania?
Thank you, Mr. President. My report is on file. The only thing I do want to mention, just a reminder, the Delaware County Greenways Grant, the Phase 4 application period is open, and the deadline for that submission is for September 29th, so at the workshop meeting, we should probably come up with a project we wish to submit. And that's all I have.
I was having a sidebar.
Not listening, just like at home.
Blame Jay, not me. And John?
The only thing I'd mentioned was that the Delaware County Greenways Grant, Phase 4 application period is open and is deadline is September 29th. So we discussed at the workshop meeting for product to submit.
Got that?
That's all I have. Thank you.
I can watch it on YouTube, indeed. Alrighty, I've got a bunch of items. Council met in executive session briefly before tonight's meeting to discuss a personnel matter. Do we require an exec session after tonight's meeting? We have it as needed? No? Anyone?
Not with tonight's weather, I don't think.
Thanks, sir.
No?
Not with tonight's weather.
Okay, so we can scratch that. I need a motion to approve the June 5, 2023 council meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on the minutes? Motion carries. Motion to approve the June 26, 2023 council workshop minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No questions on the motion? Motion carries. And the July council and workshop minutes are still being transcribed by Joan. I need a motion to ban the use of chemical pesticides, chemical herbicides, and animal poisons on the exteriors only of any borough-owned property.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on the motion? I should say aye. Motion carries. I want to thank everyone, all the volunteers that helped out, the wonderful committee that helped build the Butterfly Sanctuary, anyone that drove by at any given time of day for the last year, probably saw a number of us working there at different times. It certainly wasn't easy, and the end result is, it's a beautiful project. And I named every single volunteer at the dedication. I don't want to repeat myself and hold us up, but thank you all. You're all wonderful people from different towns, different counties, mostly Brookhaven, but we had someone from Bucks County and one from Chester County that helped out, and it really is a great project. It's a great message. It's a beautiful area. And I should also note that we have a, on that project, we have a pledge from the Operating Engineers Union Local 542 to install the 4,000 pavers that we purchased as part of the PICO grant to connect the sidewalk from, on Coburn Boulevard, through the turnaround at Durkin Field and to put either one or two entrances into the sanctuary, so those that are handicapped or otherwise require motorized, motorized, what's the word I'm looking for? Scooters, yeah, or whatever into it. They're also pledging to run water down to the sanctuary area, tapping into the line that runs parallel between Durkin Field and the retention pond, so we don't have to drag hoses around to keep the area watered during dry periods. And they are also pledging to add electric so we may light up the trees along the sanctuary up on the top of the berm. I can't really estimate, but you're looking at $100,000 in parts and materials that we have a pledge for them to do. Considering that the project, thanks to all the volunteer work and the grant, only costs taxpayers $8,500 to build something, that's an incredible, incredible pledge, and we certainly thank them. But again, thank you all, and thank you, everyone that showed up to the dedication ceremony, and once again, thank you to everyone that had a hand in the Third Annual Show for Hope. It was, once again, just an amazing, amazing car show, even bigger and better than last year. And as you know, we lost our dear friend and tax collector and personal family friend of mine, Jim Smith. Took me five and a half years to cry in public. Motion. Motion to advertise for the open position of Brookhaven Borough Tax Collector.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
God bless, Mr. Smith. I need a motion to accept the resignation of Councilman Michael Gilroy, effective immediately.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Sewicki?
Yes, we do have to pay some bills this month, so I do have a motion to pay the August bills. It's $73,218.83. Of that, general fund is $70,618.24. Trash fund is $1,972.91. Sewer fund is $627.68. So I am going to make that motion so we can pay the bills this month.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion carries. What was the civil service question?
The civil service was that we have to amend the civil service for the August.
Oh, and I'm terribly sorry. I actually have-
And to nominate Georgia.
I actually have to appoint Mr. Pappas as Chair of the Civil Service Commission as there is now a vacancy in that position with the resignation of Mr. Gilroy. And we need a motion to amend the agenda to add an alternate to the Civil Service Commission.
Do we need to make the motion or was that the motion?
No, we need to make it.
The motion is to add it to the agenda.
Okay, I'll second that.
I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Very confusing.
Aye. So it was William Craft? Okay, so a motion to add William Craft to the Civil Service Commission as an alternate.
Are we making the motion?
Yes. Yeah, generally, the president does not make motions, him or herself.
I'll make that-
I'm asking for the motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did I misspeak? Sorry, I'm a little bit of a Mr. Smith.
It was confusing.
Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you. I'd first like to start my report off by making a motion to approve the changes to the Parks and Recreation Ordinance, Chapter 1062.
And this ordinance has been properly advertised pursuant to law, and it is subject to a motion to adopt the ordinance for this evening.
I'm in motion.
Are you guys all right?
I'll just make a second. Do you want a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions on the motion? Motion carries.
Thank you. The ordinance committee is scheduled to meet on Thursday, August 17th, at 7:00 PM. I don't know if I'm going to be canceling that meeting or not, depending on whether everyone can attend. If we do have to cancel it, I'll make sure that a notice put on the door for that. So I'm just going to mention it one more time, and then I'll be done until the next time it happens. But I wanted to, again, remind everyone to please call the Borough Office if your trash has not been picked up. The number is 610-874-2557. Wet cardboard, plastic bags, packing materials from deliveries, pizza boxes, not the frozen pizza boxes, but the kind you get when you buy your pizza in a store. These are not able to be recycled, so if you put these items in your can, they're going to dump your can in the trash truck. So I just want to remind everyone one more time, and I want to record it, so please don't do that, or it's going to go in the regular trash. Rec Board and Community News and Borough Events, so Jessica Moyer from the Brookhaven Recreation Board is hosting another Artful Aging Project for senior residents aged 55 and older on Sunday, August 27th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM here at the Borough Hall. The craft is a beautiful door decoration, so if you're interested, please call the Borough- is a beautiful door decoration. So if you're interested, please call the Borough to register. Brookhaven Farmers and Makers Market hosted by and at the Real Church through September 16th on Saturdays from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM. The address is 301 Edward Striving, Brookhaven. September 30th, Saturday, is our 36th Annual Family Day from noon to 4:00 PM. Mr. Dykes, you're going to cover that when you come up? Okay, let's go about the registration dates and all that. Thank you. Attention all golfers. Sunday, October 15th, is our 19th Annual Golf Outing at Ed Oliver's Golf Course, beginning at noon. Mark your calendars and tell all your friends that you'd like to have a friendly competition with them on the golf course. This is a fun day, with all proceeds going to our Recreation Board. On Sunday, October 22nd, from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM, is our Fall Indoor Flea Market and Chili Cook-Off, from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM. And there'll be more information that comes out on that as the event draws closer. Trunk or Treat will be held on Saturday, October 28th. This year, the Brookhaven Recreation Board will take over this event. I would like to just give a shout out to Mike Garvey for volunteering his time over the years to make Trunk or Treat what it is today. Stay tuned for more information as the event draws closer. It is confirmed, the Shred and Electronics Recycling Event is Saturday, November 4th, at Coburn Elementary's parking lot. I'll be reminding everyone each month as it gets closer about that. I know I've had a couple of people come up to me, and they're waiting for it. So it is definitely confirmed for Saturday, November 4th. And I just wanted to end my report with congratulating all of the volunteers who worked at the Butterfly Sanctuary, who helped with the Car Show, Hope for Hail. It was just wonderful. I've actually had people come up to me wanting to get some information on mental health. So that's what it's all about. So thank you.
And while we're on the sanctuary, I would advise against it. We're going to put signs up bringing dogs down into the area. There's one of the dominant plants down there, it's called Dog Bane. And it's called Dog Bane for a reason. It won't kill a dog, I don't believe it. It can make a dog ill if they eat it. And milkweed is really no picnic for dogs either. So if you're going to bring dogs in there, be careful and be mindful.
Should we make a sign?
That's what you said.
Use that up, okay.
Tom Dykes is going to design the sign as well. But I'm sorry, Tom, I ended through.
Another jab.
It's not a jab, it's a joke. Mrs. Heller?
Yes. I have a few motions before I get into my report. So the first motion is to accept Police Officer Trevor Johnson's resignation, effective July 25th, 2023. Mr. Johnson is moving on in his career.
To the Fed, yes.
Yes. So we wish him all the best, but I'm making that motion to accept.
He was a great cop, wonderful young man. We're definitely going to miss him. We wish him well with the Fed. Who wants to second?
I will.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
With that, I'm going to ask for a motion to authorize the background checks for the remaining candidates on our eligibility list for the position of a full-time police officer.
You guys awake? Janice got it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
I'm also going to motion to waive the permit fee to install Memorial Sign at the entrance of the walking trail for Ms. Betty Kelly.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
Okay, so Mr. Dykes, myself, and Public Works met with the baseball board members on the 24th of July to, over at Memorial Field and Durkin Field. We looked at some upcoming projects and long-term projects to kind of improve those fields. So we're still working with the baseball board members to finalize that with Public Works. So once that comes, we'll make sure everyone is aware. On, did you mention the Concert in the Park on the 26th?
I did not.
Okay. So I wanted to thank the Rec Board for a wonderful concert in the park. I think it was one of our most well-attended concerts that were in the park on the 26th of July. It was beautiful weather, a little iffy in the beginning because of the rain the night before, but it turned out to be a beautiful night. So thank the Rec Board, thank Jim for his band playing, because it was quite a nice night. So we also had, on the 28th of July, our Christmas in July double feature. It was a little bit past my bedtime, but we hung in. And again, we're working on new movies for our next, maybe not double feature, because I don't think I can pass 10 o'clock. But a nice event. I want to thank the chief, both chiefs, for the wonderful event at the National Night Out. It was a beautiful night, a great messaging for the communities, and I loved the collaboration between all the departments. It was great to see everyone and seeing the state police with the flyover, which was very nice. So K-9 demonstration was even quite interesting.
That was impressive.
That was very impressive, so.
Yeah, I need a dog like that.
Yes, I offered up Mr. Heller as the dummy, but.
I need a dog and a couple of volunteers for that.
To be trained, apparently, so.
Couple are up here.
Yes. I wanted to thank the Fire Department for their response on the 29th in the 3400 block of Williamson. So thank you for that, sir. We also tested, or actually had to do an alert notification for that as well. But thank God, it wasn't really anything major. But it was a nice response from all of our surrounding departments as well. Upcoming meetings, we have the Parade Committee this Wednesday, the 9th, at 7:00. Anyone that would be interested in participating, please come in. It's in this room at 7:00 on the 9th. We also have, on the 10th of this month, the Technology Communications Meeting at 7:00. Did you talk about the Family Day Meeting coming up, or no?
No, I don't really.
So it's Tuesday, right, Tom, on the 15th? So our next Family Day Meeting is Tuesday, the 15th, at 7:00 in this room. Please, it does need a lot of volunteers to make that happen. So please come and attend if you can. Let's see what else we have. And again, I just wanted to thank everyone for this past weekend. It was a very busy, very emotional weekend between the dedication and for the show for Hope. I wanted to thank our state representative, and we also had Dr. McAvoy from the.
Marion McAvoy from Child Advocacy, Governor Shapiro's office.
They came and they spoke, and it was, as Mr. McKenna said, it was definitely a tear-jerker the entire weekend, but it was also uplifting. And there was a lot of, I feel, closure for a lot of people that were not able to have closure before. So thank you to everyone that participated in that, because it was a very good event. We also were awarded, or not awarded, but we actually got reimbursed for our COVID grant money, which we saw $21,864.39, which we received on the 2nd, and that was for, done by Steve Schultz, and obviously from the Police Department and the Fire Department, during additional COVID funds that we were received. So I want to thank all those that were participating in that and getting that information for us. And lastly, just to touch on Mr. Smith, he.
Well, it wasn't just me, so I feel better.
I know. It wasn't just you. Our family was very honored to know him for the last 10 years, and our kids were honored to call him Pop. And so please keep the Smith and the Kugelman family in your hearts and in your thoughts and prayers, because he is going to be greatly missed. There is definitely a void in our community because of the loss of him, so.
Lovely, lovely man.
So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
Yeah, since I knew him for decades, and I knew his mother before that, when she worked at the Borough Hall, the old Borough Hall. They were a wonderful family, Smith Family from Mount Vernon Avenue. Jim Smith was our tax collector for many, many years. Very competent, very caring individual. So many phone calls he got through the weeks and months and years from people from other towns, because he was considered the expert in tax collecting and in other, he did title insurance and.
You're in the title company, yeah.
And for those reasons, he got phone calls here. I know the girls got phone calls for him all the time. But he will be very sorely missed. Anybody that knew him, he was a charming gentleman. I knew him for decades, and he really was really a good example of what we want our residents to be. Helpful to others, and really just a great citizen, always there to help you. So we hope that he rests in peace.
I just have two more things really quickly, but thank you, Janice. So I just wanted to wish Sergeant Tim Habig and Chief Montella a happy birthday, because their birthday will be between now and our workshop.
Don't rush it, Chief.
In between those timeframes. So I just wanted to put out a shout-out for a happy birthday.
39.
And that's the end of my report. So, thank you, Janice.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. Mr. Pappas, sir?
I have no reports, Senator.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vaskus is absent. Mr. Leslie is absent. Chief, do you want to jump in with the report since you missed it?
Is it our report, or is it our then?
It's up to you. I don't know if you're tired from the call, or.
I can just agree if you want.
We want to hear from the chief.
It's up to you.
Just so you know what's going on here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's short. We had no loss on property for the month. We had 51 calls, 411 for the year. Just notable incidents, Sherby spoke about it. We had a building fire at 7011, top drive, and I left something on the stove. I was asleep in the bathroom. It was a good call by the neighbors up there, and it not being a big fire. We had a fire at the Chester Junction, which is the pipeline transfer station on Williamson. Back home with the guy that I deal with all the time in the daytime, Mike Walsh from Spectre Energy. He called me to the station on Saturday morning. He said, I think our building's on fire. I had a problem. So that's a big facility there, a lot of pressure, a lot of different product needs to be there. We got there, and we only had a fire in the stack. That was not, that's not normal for that type of facility to have a fire in a stack with high-pressure gas. The fire companies and mutual aid companies, we just did a defensive operation, not to put the fire out till they arrived. And with their instructions, we assisted their pipeline guy to secure the building, ventilate it, and then we just ended up with the fire. But there was a lot of potential there with the lightning strike that something could never happen. Until we secured that building to make sure that it wasn't a problem, everything was good, air monitoring was good, all residents were safe. That's why we put the notification out.
Don't they have lightning rods?
I, they were looking into why that problem happened, so.
Oh, okay.
They didn't get back to me on their findings, but.
Oh, I see.
A metal building gets struck like that, and there's a lot of equipment in there, a lot of valves. It was some concern for the building. We were good. And then we had three, two accidents, 352 on Duttonville Road, 308 Duttonville Road. And we had a propane storage rack at the Gavey Beer Barn. And we assisted Middletown on a building fire. Well, Middletown Road and Upland on a building fire on 22nd Street, where we get the rest of the report. And thanks for everybody, the chief and the council and the residents that came out for that National Night Out. That was something else to ask. That was a huge event. It was very good. It was nice to see there was a lot of families there. We gave out a lot of stuff, and students gave out a lot of stuff. But it was just a great night in general. Crowd debate, you know, your town, your fire company, your police, your council members, and all the other towns in Pennsyl. It was a great, great, great honor to be there.
What were they saying, 700 people or something?
Well, we gave out 500 alone, and that's just kids. Because we had bags made up of kids, and we gave out almost 500. So that's amazing. We think that there's over 1,000 people. It was pretty good. And on top of that, we appreciate the invite to the sanctuary. Fire Company's honored to be part of that and our car show. We love to participate in a lot of that. It's all great community stuff, great causes. We'd like to be part of that. Thank you guys for all this politeness. And my ambulance report, just so you know, the ambulance answered 273 ambulance calls last month, transported 148 people to the hospital, and 160 were ALS and 113 were BLS. Sometimes we transport around guys.
That was scary, but he's okay.
Yep.
I do apologize. There was an actionable item under Mr. Vaskus's report. So I'll need a motion to rehire seasonal employee Justin Reeves to the Public Works Department at a rate of $17 per hour, effective retro to August 1st, 2023.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed questions? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Polo, sir?
Okay, for July, with regards to COVID, we're running 15 issues, issued 12 letters, free citations, numerous emails and callbacks. We had four words, no requests for last month. For the building side, 66 building permits applied, 438 have been issued. 13 contractors' licenses were applied, 413 issued, and 16 UNO inspections completed.
Thank you, sir. I should add one thing. We do need a new podium for the council room. We used it for the sanctuary dedication. One of the wheels kind of fell off. It was this podium, correct?
It was, yes.
Okay, it's kind of junk anyway.
Harry worked his magic to make it on that.
Yeah, I would get a more practical podium that you can still wire a mic to, so. Harry, get on that as soon as possible. And obviously, second public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and street for the record.
Tom Dykes, favorite question, give a road. Well, here it is. Okay, so as alluded to from Donna, Family Day signups will be started. Sounds strange to say that already, but started on August 28th, going through September 22nd. Be Monday through Friday, 9 to 4, correct, John?
Mm-hmm.
9 to 4 at your office. There will be volunteers also helping at lunchtime, so your staff can take lunches or doing that. There will be evening nights on August 28th and September the 20th, September the 11th, the council night, the evening night. And then there will be other evening signups announced later as we get closer to doing that. The state, the next Family Day meeting is next Tuesday, the 15th, at 7:00. Anybody who wants to come, we'll welcome everybody and anybody. It takes lots and lots of people to run Family to get to come. So anybody who wants to help out, even if you can only help out for an hour or two, or you can help set up beforehand, or we have the efforts, you definitely need it for that.
Tom, evening sign up, 6:30 to 8?
Evening, 6 to 8.
6 to 8.
6 to 8, evening signups. Let's see, trying to go down through date wise here. So we have that going on. The next thing coming up is we've added another Books on Blankets coming back in September. So the Middletown Library will be here in September 4th on Thursday mornings again, at Eden Park. So we're trying to get everybody going. I've already talked to one preschool about it, and two other preschools in the town to come over. And you can trace the numbers that's going on there.
That's at 10:00 AM on Thursday, correct?
10, I think it's 10 or 10:30 today.
All Thursdays, September?
Yeah, yep.
Trunk or Treat, we talked about that. Trunk or Treat is October 28th. We're getting ready, we're going to work with Mr. Garvey transferring it from Quebec Organization to the court. We need, once again, more volunteers. I'll bring you up with that. Myself, Mr. Leslie are going to, or Mr. Allen.
Mr. Allen.
Sorry about that. He is a Leslie, this woman. We'll be working with that, and the other volunteers who are going to help with organizing and running that day. If you are interested in it, please contact me on the Haven-PA-Recreation Board Facebook page. That way, our information will come together, and we'll get a work together to bring you back. And me and Mr. Garvey also have that. The next one is, we missed. So October 27th will be our Monster Mash Dance Party for 5th and 6th graders.
Wow.
But they forgot.
I didn't know we were doing it.
I didn't know we had a date.
Yes, kids love it.
Yeah, kids love that.
So if you have a 5th and 6th grader, bring them on over. Usually recharge like $10. They get pizza and a soda, and then anything else with that. That's the fun back at the DJ and lots of stuff. House kids are welcome, just no hard-faced mask, if what we ask for. Then with along with the new mark, we said that the Chili Cook-Off is coming up, and that's going to be for bragging rights for Brookhaven for chili. So we're asking anyone who wants to do it, put a formal form out, people can sign up and do it. It's not going to be run the way that the big Chili Cook-Off things are. You're going to be in the room, pre-made it, bring it in, and we'll have people go through it, taste it, and see what's going on. them and see what's going on. But it should be a fun event for some people. For that, and I think that's just a temporary thing, so, just, no, I'm not busy at all.
Not at all.
Any other questions or anything? And then we'll get together something.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I would recommend you just add Tom to the side table. It's, I'm not, I'm not by any means making a joke. I mean, seriously, just add him to the side table. He can take Mr. Leslie's spot, actually, if he wants. Just don't hit the mic. Anyone else for public discussion? Going once, going twice, second public discussion session is closed. Counsel, anything else?
Yes, I forgot something.
All righty.
I wanted to congratulate, we have three lady swimmers from the Brookhaven Swim Club that is going to the Elite Meet, and they are Ella Fields, Madison Faggus, and Cara D'Amico. So we want to congratulate them, and hopefully they win at the Elite Meets.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything else from council?
I just wanted to, I forgot to thank Public Works for their amazing work that they have been doing throughout the entire borough, between the help with baseball, softball, the sanctuary, the car show. We really do appreciate everything that they have done for us, because they are sometimes behind the scenes, and no one understands exactly what, all the work that they do,